Hey, ladies and gentlemen, let's maybe get started. Thank you all for coming tonight. My name is Don McGarvey. I'm tournament co-chair along with the wonderful Marilyn Cox. We appreciate you being here. It's my pleasure to introduce the people from Golf Canada, a terrific team of people who've come out today to present to you information about the 2026 CPKC Canadian Women's Open. I'll begin with Leanne, Monica, and at the end, Ryan. We've also got a couple of representatives, one from Explore Edmonton, who you'll meet in a minute, and another from the city of Edmonton, who I think Ryan will introduce in a little while. I can tell you that over the last several weeks, since it was announced that the Royal Mayfair would host this event, we've had some terrific interactions with the Golf Canada team. They are true professionals at what they do, and I can tell you that both Marilyn and I are really privileged to be able to work with these folks. And I have no doubt that with their assistance, we will try to put on what will be the best Canadian Women's Open this country has ever seen. So you didn't come here to listen to me, but I do want the wonderful Marilyn Cox to say a few words.
Thanks so much. We're thrilled to see you. We have been overjoyed with the response that we've had from Mayfair members. We had over 90 people fill out the initial form with your three choices. Those will be honored. The Golf Canada will speak to that in a little bit. So know that we've got a lot of the committee chairs in place. We are learning more about what those roles are going to entail, and they'll be tweaked as each tournament goes along. It's been really interesting, the documentation they've been giving us. They have in the last four years. Every chair committee gives their recommendations, and so it's been interesting going through that. They'll learn from that again this year. So thank you for being here. Feel free to ask questions. We'll interact more afterwards, and I'm with Don. It's gonna be a great event.
Wow, how do I follow up with that? Just thank you so much for the kind words. It has been just a true pleasure to work with the Mayfair team and with you two as well. We are so excited to return to Edmonton. We have an incredible history with this championship at your club. We've produced two incredible champions, you know, with Lydia Ko and Lorena Ochoa, hoping maybe it'll be at Brooke Henderson next time, but we're not biased at all. So the 2026 CPKC Women's Open is the 52nd annual playing of the championship. It's got incredible history in Canadian golf. Yeah, we're very excited to come here. I'm gonna do just a quick kind of introductions with the team. I'm gonna just get them to say hello, and then I'm gonna get into a little bit about the process, like how we got here, why we're gonna come to the Royal Mayfair. And then Leanne is gonna walk you through all the ins and outs of hosting the championship, you know? So there is an incredible amount of work that goes into hosting an LPGA Tour event, an event of this magnitude, an event that's gonna probably see, hopefully, north of 80,000 people. I think that that's kind of our target for the week. It's also gonna generate upwards of $30 million worth of national economic impact, you know? So this is what we call like a traveling circus or a traveling carnival that we're gonna bring to your golf course. So without further ado, again, my name is Ryan Logan. I'm the Director of External Relations for Golf Canada. What I do for the organization is basically build out our championship calendar. So we host 35 national championships and qualifiers every year. We've done a bit of a different process with this championship. Typically, it's me calling guys like Matt and Dave and begging and saying, please, host us next year. And then they'll say, ah, fine, sure, that guy just won't leave me alone. This time around, we actually created a RFP process, you know? So we kind of went at it through a different angle. We said, okay, we have the CPKC Women's Open. We're open from '26 to '28 in terms of like the dates on our calendar, and we basically take that to our friends in major metropolitan areas across the country and say, hey, do you want the championship? Why we do that is because then we go to markets that want us. And we were blown away at the submission from Explore Edmonton and the city of Edmonton. It became very, very clear to us early in the process that we want to bring this championship back to Edmonton. We want to work with the Explore Edmonton and the city Edmonton team. And then talking with Matt, it's like, hey, Matt, I know that you don't like it when I beg, but I'm gonna beg, man. You know, so it's been an incredible partnership. It's been, we actually started the process about a year ago to the day from that RFP process, and the conversations and the connections that we've had, we've already had like epic experiences in Edmonton, including Matt taking some lunch money off of me on Tuesday. I don't wanna talk about too much, but anyways, I just wanted to say, Matt, Dave, to Wade as well, to the entire board, to Marilyn, to Don, just thank you so much for welcoming us. It's been incredible so far. I'm gonna have Leanne introduce herself and Monica. Maybe we'll start with Monica, just based on the order of operations here.
Sure. So my name is Monica Djokovic. I am the Sales Manager for the CPKC Women's Open. This is my fourth tournament. I started in 2021. Ottawa Hunt was my first tournament. What my specialty is, is the general ticket sales going into and leading into the CPKC Women's Open. I also specialize in corporate hospitality, which is what we're really excited for, and that is the hosting spaces that you'll see along the ropes, which is typically 16th to 18th. I also specialize in the championship pro-am, which is your opportunity to play alongside two LPGA players, front nine and back nine with your foursome, and that's an experience inside the ropes. So I will talk a little bit later on in the presentation of corporate hospitality and what's to be expected here at the course.
Hi, everyone. My name's Leanne Schellenberg. I am the Assistant Tournament Director for the CPKC Women's Open. This year in 2025 will be my third tournament. I started in 2023 at the Shaughnessy Golf Club, last year at Earl Grey, and really looking forward to coming to Edmonton in 2026. My portfolio involves volunteers, so working with the host tournament chairs as well as all the committee chairs, and recruiting the 1,200 volunteers that we need to make this championship great. And I also work on our food and beverage programs, mostly what goes on outside of the clubhouse in terms of, again, the corporate hospitality, food and beverage, as well as concessions. I also help with special events that we host alongside the tournament. So I do work with Monica on the pro-am. We host an opening and closing ceremonies, and other junior clinics, things like that that come alongside the tournament. So we'll get into kind of what a tournament looks like in a little bit here.
If I could just pump each of their tires just very briefly, with Monica in particular, last year at Earl Grey, this is just to get your juices going and get a little bit of friendly competition. We had our best CPKC Women's Open ever. It was the 50th anniversary of the championship. We actually, we're coming off back-to-back tournament of the year on the LPGA Tour, which we're very excited about, but Monica really worked directly with the Earl Grey team. And, you know, she has an established network of individuals as well that she wants to work with to make sure that they're gonna get a premium experience here, too. But just with Monica's support, we smashed it out of the water. We had about 76,000 people attend the championship for the week, so I think we can do one better here, okay? With Leanne, she is a volunteer guru. She is incredible. Her work with the volunteers, I'm sure you're already feeling kind of her support and her institutional knowledge to make sure that the volunteers that plug into the championship make the championship possible. So she has a really hands-on approach. We get annual awards from the LPGA Tour on our volunteer experience that we create, and we also have received Sport Tourism Canada awards based on the volunteer experience as well, and that's all a byproduct of the work that she does. So you're in very, very safe hands. Not with us today is Claire Welsh, who's our tournament director. She's back in Mississauga, getting ready for an amazing championship in a couple of weeks, too. She's very excited to spend time with you as well, so I just wanted to mention Leanne. So without further ado, I do want to introduce our friends on the Edmonton side. So we have Rhona Bremmer and Tim Casper from, Tim's from Explore Edmonton, Rhona's from the city of Edmonton. Do you want to just offer just a quick hello?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, my name's Tim Casper. I'm the Manager of Event Attraction for Explore Edmonton. So to sum it up, my job is to basically go out and sell our wonderful city to folks like Golf Canada, different national and international sport organizations, to, you know, illustrate to them why we want their events here, why we are such a good host. So yeah, it's incredible. I think we can do all the work that we want on our end as far as putting together a competitive bid package and, you know, making it, you know, as enticing as possible from that side of things, but it really is not possible without, you know, that local support and a host club like this in this case. So again, thank you to Matt, the entire staff and the board here. Yeah, because without that, you know, we can put in the best bid in the world, but if there's nowhere to host it and, yeah, do an incredible job, it's not gonna happen. So yeah, that's kind of a summary of what we do, and we'll get in a little bit more into detail as far as some of the specific support that we will be kind of alongside the whole way for as the tournament comes up.
Yeah, so hi, I'm Rhona Bremmer. I'm the Director of Partnerships and Event Strategy with the city. So Tim and the team over at Explorer are the Explorer side, I'm the city side, and right now I'm literally the city side. My one staff member went to a different job, so we're in the recruitment process, but part of our role is, so we have, we, my portfolio is kind of a huge portfolio because the partnership side is, we work with a lot of the sport partners throughout the city, so a lot of groups, like everything from Snow Valley to the ski hill to people who do dragon boat races on the river. So it's really a diverse section of sport partnerships. And then on the other side, really is around event strategy. As Tim said, we bring events to the city, but we also provide the liaison with other areas within the city. So if you need civic services, say you need a parking ride, we'll help coordinate and lead with Golf Canada to make sure that things go smoothly. We also will look after stuff like beautification in the city, making sure the city looks great because obviously this is a huge opportunity for us from a brand perspective, so we'll wanna make sure that Edmonton looks great, the banners are flying proudly across the city. So that's kind of our role, along with working at Explorer. And yeah, I echo the appreciation to everybody at this facility for the great work, and I'm sure we won't just do 80, let's go a little higher. We can outdo them by more than 4,000.
Thanks for saying that.
Perfect. And then, yeah, before we get started, just want to acknowledge that we are incredibly fortunate, I think, as a group to be able to live and work here on Treaty Six territory in the home line of the Métis. Obviously, this land being the traditional home over, you know, hundreds and thousands of years for many Indigenous peoples, including the Cree, Blackfoot, Métis, Dakota Sioux, Dene, Soto, Anishinaabe, Inuit, and many others. And yeah, as a group, I think we all just wanna honor the memory of all Indigenous peoples who have gathered on this land and whose histories, languages, and cultures continue to influence, you know, the way we live and operate today.
Beautifully said. And yeah, it's just, you know, we look at golf as just like a beautiful celebration of using the land in an amazing way, and sport and recreation and community, just the social experiences that we have on the land, it's really, really special. I didn't start with this, but I just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about Golf Canada and what we do on a macro, macro level. So we are the national sport organization for golf in Canada, obviously. We actually represent upwards of, you know, so typically like my elevator pitch is, we have about 365,000 individual members across the country. It's about 385,000 now, you know? So we're looking at our, our sales trackers on the public player side, and we're just, you know, since COVID, I'm sure it's reflected on your T-sheets, golf is going like this right now. It's a really exciting time in Canadian golf. It is actually the most participated sport in all of Canada. So a little factoid for you, there are about 6 million people that play golf in Canada, an absolutely staggering amount of folks love to tee it up here, obviously across the street of Victoria as well. So yeah, just a really fun time for all of us, probably not so fun for guys like Wade that have to fix all those ballmarks on the green. But, you know, that said, we also have about 1,500 member clubs. Shameless plug, if you have the Golf Canada app, please use it. If you don't, tell your friends. It's a great engagement tool for us. We actually see upwards of 11 million scores posted annually through the Golf Canada mobile app, especially hole-by-hole data. Sorry, I know it's a pain in the ass, but it is actually an incredible treasure trove of data that I get to give to Dave and to Matt and say, actually, your toughest stroke hole is this from the Blue Tees, you know? So it's a, it's a really, really cool engagement tool that we kind of, just kind of turbocharged over the pandemic. We report to a volunteer board of directors. We are a complete not-for-profit, so I gotta mention that, too, when I beg for money from Tim Casper. But the championship itself, I kind of touched briefly on the history of it and why it's so important to us, but it is really a function of kind of what we call like a four-legged stool, is what my CEO likes to describe it as. So it's a partnership between the LPGA Tour with Explore Edmonton and the city of Edmonton, Royal Mayfair, and with Golf Canada, you know? So between the four of us, we all make this championship happen. We're gonna move into your golf course kind of five, six weeks before the event, and you're gonna be like, oh my goodness, like this is a construction site, you know? It is gonna ramp up in a big way with the excitement kind of coming along with it, too. You know, typically with this event, we see upwards of about 92, 93 of the top 100 players in the world. We're very excited. We have Lydia Ko gonna be joining us in Mississauga this year. We have Nelly Korda as well, Canada's own, Smiths Falls' own. Brooke Henderson will be there as well. She just attended our media day. And we, you know, we're gonna touch on it as well, but we see 16, 17 Canadians in the field, which is an incredible opportunity for us, our Team Canada program and the high-performance pathway, you know? So we think that part of Brooke's success is because she was playing in the championship when she was 15 and 16 and 17 years old. So we have very young competitors qualifying for the championship. At Shaughnessy, we had 12-year-old Michelle Liu. Last year, we had 14-year-old Clara Deng. And like all of these players, Aphrodite Deng as well, like they're all kind of growing at the same time. And I say that because through our World Junior Girls Golf Championship, which is an event that we host, we actually won it two years ago, you know? So like the thing, the thing's working, you know? And we're just all about providing these young athletes with an incredible platform to measure themselves against world-class LPGA Tour players, you know? So it's very, very exciting for our group that we get to provide those players with a bit of a taste of what's to come, and we think the results are gonna start to follow. The kind of under-19 crop is incredible. We just had a young woman by the name of Tilly Claggett today. She won the PGA of Canada's Women's Championship, so we have exemptions into that through our She Plays Golf series that we'll talk about in a sec. She won by seven today. So she is an incredible talent. She shot 63 two days ago on the same golf course that Brooke won the PGA of Canada Women's Championship when she was 16. So there's a lot to be excited about with this kind of next upcoming wave. Wish I could say the same on the boys' side. If anyone figures out how to develop young men into PGA Tour athletes, we would love your advice. But this championship's unique in that regard, and you should be really excited and proud of kind of seeing those Canadian flags on the leaderboards and hopefully in contention here next year. Yeah, so without further ado, what are we doing next? We're sizzling. All right, so I always like to make the joke, we love a sizzle reel. We will make a sizzle reel for absolutely everything. What that means is it's just a video that gets really everyone pumped up. So this is gonna give you a little bit of a taste on what Earl Grey looked like last year.
For half a century, names have presented upon this historic tournament in eager anticipation of what the world's best will bring. This year's edition of the CPKC Women's Open from Earl Grey Golf Club was truly unforgettable, a celebration of 50 years prior to Women's Open. A field consisting of six past champions, 23 Olympicers, and of course, 17 Canadians led by Brooke Henderson. The spectators were treated to inspiring play all week long. Inspiration was also found outside the ropes, but First Tee clinics held all week, including the hosting of Sukina First Nation, growing the game for all. The CPKC Women's Leadership Summit saw over 200 attendees gain insights and community from some of North America's greatest minds and successful entrepreneurs, sharing their experiences and galvanizing our future male leaders. Within the hallowed grounds of the pristine Earl Grey Golf Club, fans were treated to a record-setting hospitality bill, 30% larger than the previous year's footprint. Passionate partners elevated the experience for all in the fairway and on course, along with over 1,300 eager volunteers. Golf Canada's continued efforts for sustainability and positive impact were felt, with 8,900 gallons of water and 68,000 water bottles diverted from landfill, thanks to Yeti CPKC Water Stations around the golf course. Attention to environmental sustainability was equal to the event's charitable impact to not only the game of golf, but those who champion it for generations to come. Thanks to the CPKC Has Heart program and the generosity of Canadians, $3.8 million was raised for the Alberta Children's Hospital Foundation, over 500,000 raised for Red Deer Regional Health Foundation, and nearly 200,000 amassed to support First Tee Alberta. With round one underway, fans were locked from opening drive to the final putt. All of those eyes were on American Lauren Toddland, who braved the elements and maintained form to earn her first-ever LPGA Tour victory in front of thousands of passionate Canadian fans. Thank you, Canada, for making this the most successful CPKC Women's Open our great country has ever produced. Here's to the next half-century of incredible golf from our Women's National Open.
Everyone pumped up?
I am.
All right, great. So now Leanne is gonna take over, so thank you so much.
Okay, yeah, I'm ready to go. Like, let's go out there and do this tomorrow. No, I, those videos always just bring back so many good memories for me and our team and how exciting, and I think the biggest thing that I always hear is like the people that aren't in this room or that choose not to show up at the event from the club will have a bit of, they'll feel like they missed out. So I hope all of you can be ambassadors for this event and really encourage all the members to attend and be part of it, because it is really something special to be a part of. So as it kind of mentioned in the video, a big part of what CPKC has done and what we've done with this event is the charitable impact. So last year, $4.7 million left in Calgary, going to the Alberta Children's Hospital Foundation and Red Deer and First Tee. So that's, it's a huge part of why CPKC does what they do, supporting CPKC Has Heart and Heart Health wherever we go. We had that record attendance of 73,000 people and our highest level of corporate partners ever at '28. So the tournament has seen huge growth from the, since the pandemic, going from, what maybe was 40,000 people to now 73,000 people. So huge growth, and I think that's just part of what we're seeing in women's professional sport overall, and that's what keeps me coming back day to day is just knowing the growth that's coming and those younger generation of players is coming as well. We touched a bit on the, Ryan touched a bit on the field, and we do see best-in-class fields. Players love coming to Canada, they love feeling the support. We do generally have one of the largest infrastructure builds on tour, and so lots of players say that the CPKC Women's Open feels like a major for them. They love coming and they love being part of our event. We obviously have had two great champions here in Lydia Ko and Lorena Ochoa, and so Claire has spoke with Lydia and gave her the heads up that we were coming back. So Lydia was very excited to hear about that. And I think, as Ryan said, just that opportunity to expose Canadian players to the LPGA Tour, give them a chance to play in their home country is something that Brooke, Savannah, Elena, all of the Canadians that are currently on tour talk about how important that is and how special that is for them, and so hopefully we can see some Albertans in the fields next year.
If this looks a little light, based on what I was describing, last year was an Olympic year, so we had the unfortunate experience of being sandwiched between the Evian, which is in France, come back to Calgary, and then the Olympics was in Paris, you know? So we were actually a month before our usual timeframe, so we were in end of July last year, actually coincided with the Jasper wildfires, which is pretty crazy. I used to live and work in Jasper. So that's why the field is, it looks a little light, but I promise you, the world's coming.
The tournament is also award-winning. We've been named the two-time tournament of the year back-to-back in 2022 and 2023, and have just, I think that just goes to show that it is a valued stop on the LPGA Tour. And maybe just a little bit more about how we work with the LPGA Tour. So they do sanction our event, and so they are the ones responsible really for like the golf course setup and the agronomy of the golf course. They'll work with Wade to make sure that everything's kind of up to the standards that the LPGA sets. We have no concerns there, obviously, of having hosted twice previously, but the LPGA really is a, is an important partner for us, and they also have nothing but good things to say about, about our event and the historical partnership that we have with them. So they will be on-site a number of times before the tournament as well, checking things out with us, and they're very excited to be back in Alberta as well. Now I'm gonna transition to a bit of some of the benefits of hosting and just talk a little bit about that, like why would your club wanna host? And so one of the big things that we talk about is that community aspect. We do really wanna get everyone involved. We want everyone to know that we're here, and we want as many people to come on-site and participate as possible. We work hard to work with the local Indigenous groups. We work a lot with our First Tee in Alberta and with the club to ensure that juniors are coming along with us and getting exposure to these athletes and getting to meet them. Again, with that healthcare, the charitable donation is a big part of that community piece as well. We're on golf's biggest stage, and one thing that we haven't really talked about is the global broadcast that comes along with the event. Our event is annually broadcast on Golf Channel, and it reaches millions of homes and many countries as well. And this year for Mississauga, we're actually get network broadcast on CBS on Sunday, so haven't had that in a few years, so we're really excited, and we hope that that can continue in the future. But that just goes to show the exposure that the golf course can get, just from our broadcast side of things. And as Ryan mentioned, 2026 will be the 52nd playing of the Women's National Open, and Royal Mayfair will actually be one of only seven clubs that have hosted three or more times the tournament. So as Ryan was saying, there's 1,500 member clubs of Golf Canada, and you're one of seven that will host this event three or more times, and so that support means a lot for women's golf in our country.
Can I also, just a quick factoid as well? There are only 17 clubs in Canada that have hosted the Men's Canadian Open and the Women's Canadian Open, so you're in very, very exclusive company with that, too.
And I think we've touched on this a little bit, but the best-in-class comes along in a lot of different ways, so two-time tournament of the year, volunteer appreciation awards from the LPGA in 2023 and 2024. We've won some awards for best sponsor activation. Shown here is our Levelware Caddy Lounge, which provides the caddies a place to go and hang out and feel appreciated for all the hard work that they do carrying those bags week in and week out. We've also received awards for best community and charitable engagement, as well, Ryan mentioned, the Sport Tourism Canada's International Sport Event of the Year 2025 for our 2024 event. So lots of great work that our team does to make sure that this event continues to be world-class. And some of the financial benefits for the club as well, we are guaranteeing a minimum of $825,000 in revenue for the club, targeting $1 million. And so that kind of range relies on those corporate hospitality sales and some commissions that the club can earn based on the sales that come from leads within the club. But we also, there's a large food and beverage component of that in all of the clubhouse food and beverage that CPKC will take, CPKC kind of takes over the clubhouse as their hosting space, and so all those food and beverage revenues will go to the club. There's also a small site fee and some merchandise rights that are involved in those fees as And I think we've touched on this lots, but just our ability to give up-and-coming golfers the chance to compete on an LPGA Tour event in their home country, these are the four winners of our, or three winners and the Order of Merit winner of our She Plays Golf mini-tour, which has kind of been brought back to life, a small tour in Canada for women. And so Shaughnessy Liu, Clara Deng, Tilly Claggett, and Katie Cranston have all qualified for the CPKC Women's Open. Part of our tournament week is also a Monday qualifier, so people within the local community can register and be part of that qualifier. Part of our tournament week is also a Monday qualifier, so people within the local community can register and be part of that qualifier and earn their way into the tournament. And so four people get in from the Monday qualifier. This slide is probably a little hard to read, but I wanted to share it just because it shows, we call this our Week at a Glance, so this is all the activities that take, take place during the week of our tournament. And so it kind of starts this year all the way on Saturday, August, I think it's, should be the sixteenth there, and right through to Monday, August twenty-fifth. So just at a high level, the weekend before the tournament, the course is closed to members so that we can kind of get our final preparations done. And on Sunday afternoon, the players start to arrive and can start practicing. Monday, our Golf Canada Foundation, who supports our high-performance players in First Tee, host a smaller Pro-Am, again, supporting, getting Golf Canada member, Golf Team Canada members to participate. And they host a small Pro-Am on Monday afternoon. Tuesday is our official practice rounds when most players get on-site. And then we have, usually have a number of other events that go on that day. It's a great day for kind of our kids' clinics that happen. We also have off-site our CPKC Women's Open Leadership Summit. So a chance for business leaders and our partners to get in the room and kind of do a professional development opportunity. We also host our Pro-Am draw party that evening. So anyone that purchases a Pro-Am does get to take part in a, what is a true draw, where you draw for your, you get, it's a random draw. You pick your tee time and your pros that you get to play with through a random draw and it's a fun, funny evening altogether. And then that night, CPKC also hosts a caddy appreciation event and caddies are pretty underappreciated sometimes. So we like to show them a good time at a local place in our host city. Wednesday is our Pro-Am day and this year we're doing a bit of a community day, so a special ticket package for, to get more people on-site. The Pro-Am is two, two waves, morning and afternoon, with split tees and tee times throughout the day. So it is a very busy, busy day. Our First Tee program does a walk with the pro for junior golfers. They get to walk usually the wrinkle with a pro and get to know them a little bit and maybe hit a putt. We also are trying our opening ceremonies on Wednesday as well to get everyone involved in that. And that, we, again, we have some clinics that day. And then we get into Thursday where our, actually our tournament begins and the players go out and do what they're best at. We have some smaller junior kind of activities and we also set up what we call the fairway. It's like our fan village where a lot of our partners activate. And so lots of different activities available for everyone to come and enjoy. Friday, we coin Red and White Day to support all of our Canadians, especially just to celebrate them before the cut is made on Friday night. And then Saturday, we have our Volunteer Appreciation Day. And this year, we're doing a Girls' Sports Day on Saturday. Volunteer appreciation usually involves a breakfast and a happy hour and just time to really thank all the volunteers that, we really couldn't do it without them. And then Sunday is our Championship Sunday. CPKC does their check presentation that day to the chosen charity. And we have a small closing ceremonies and a champion's reception to follow, so. And then the Monday after, we have some lucky groups that get to go out and play the course with Sunday pins and in the course as it played on Sunday. So that's something really fun for, we have some partners, we have some media, we have maybe some lucky members that get to go out and play on Monday. And then that's it. We'll, we'll start getting out of here. I'll maybe pause at this point and just ask if there's any general questions right now. Usually we try and get all of like the signage and that kind of stuff. Usually we kind of try and get as much as we can off the course within the first week. And then some of the larger structures take a little bit longer. I'll get more into kind of that timeline a little bit later in the presentation as well. Okay, I think I'm gonna take a little break and turn it over to Tim.
So I'm dropping and I'll turn it over to Tim. So really, just to, I guess, provide a little bit more on what we do. So we have a formal partnership between the city and Explore Edmonton around bringing these kinds of events to the city. And it's been a, it's been a partnership for probably, I don't know, probably fifteen years that we work really closely. And we think it's a thing that we do differently than anywhere else in the country. Or that's what we're often told when it comes to working with event producers is that Edmonton is a little bit different market because part of our partnership brings everybody you need to the table. So if you go to some cities and you need to talk to police, you have to go to police, right? In Edmonton, we bring everybody you need to talk to, so we try to make it as easy and as seamless as possible. But really, our goal is to make sure that Edmonton is a premier destination for hosting. We think we're probably one of Canada's, or we're often told we're one of Canada's top hosting cities just because of the unique partnership that we have. But I also think it's because of the communities that we get and this is a perfect example of that. When we do events, we really are looking and, you know, listening to Leanne, it was like, yep, this is a no-brainer for us because we typically look for economic impact. We look for those reputation opportunities for Edmonton. And then equally important to us is the whole community, social opportunities that are created for Edmontonians. And so this one checks all those boxes plus. And, and I really, I think there's some really great opportunities in our city to do some more programs because we, we pride ourselves on going above. So you guys already have an ambitious agenda. We'll now take it away and figure out what else can we do as a city to add to it. You know, and, and that's, you know, part of that will be working with, with this group in here to say, how can we make this even better? And beat Calgary first. Now that you hit the three, we're already, if we hit eighty, we're already seven thousand. So let's go for a ten K. But really it is, it's, it's the community and we, we come in to help the community. You know, we'll be truly your partners in trying to make this the best, the best event ever, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll let Tim, you know, we do, you know, as part of our economic opportunities and that, we do, like last year, we brought in, what did we say, a hundred and sixty million dollars of economic impact through events that we attracted to Edmonton. So this one really is gonna kick off a great year for, for our city next year, particularly in the fall because we'll have this and then we'll follow it up CFR. And then we got another one coming in December that hasn't, this one hasn't been publicly announced yet either, but in December, we'll have another one that'll be publicly announced shortly, we hope. So, so it should be a really great year for our city next year, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, just to echo what Ron said there, I think, you know, a lot of that reason why I think we take pride in going really above and beyond. And I think, you know, as, as a lot of us Edmontonians in this room, I think we realize that, you know, we're not a, we're not a Toronto, we're not a Vancouver, we're not in London or Paris. So I think we, you know, put the onus on ourselves as, you know, the destination marketing organization, which I represent with Explore Edmonton and the city, to really provide, you know, everybody across the board, from event organizers to athletes to visitors who are coming into the city with, you know, as great an experience as possible. And some of the, yeah, just to get into a little bit of detail as far as some of the specifics that, you know, between Explore Edmonton and the city of Edmonton, we support with. So yeah, we will, you know, as part of that bid process, we've committed to funding the event through, you know, both the city of Edmonton and Explore Edmonton's funding streams. On the Explore Edmonton side of things, we get funded through our hotel associations, so the Edmonton Destination Marketing Hotels. And we, you know, get, basically get a pool of money every year to go out and attract events such as this one to the city. Same with the city of Edmonton coming from kind of that more, you know, council taxpayer funding. But same thing, really just using that to, you know, sell people, make events financially viable within our community, which is always, you know, huge for event organizers. As Ron mentioned, that civic services support is, you know, we really pride ourselves on that being that one-stop shop. You know, organizers don't have to go trying to hurt cats just to get an answer, but whether they can close the road down, they can go to one person who's able to then, you know, take care of any issues as far as, you know, in this case, it'll be, you know, a lot around parking rides and getting people down into this area and getting them back, you know, up downtown or wherever they're going safely. As far as marketing promotion and media relations, that's a lot where Explore Edmonton comes in. So as, you know, the city's destination marketing organization, that's our focus. You know, you'll see, whether it's on our Instagram page or our Facebook page or whatever, I think we have, you know, I think over three hundred thousand active followers across that. So we are able, you know, all the fancy pictures, the Walter Yale Bridge and everything like that you'll see on, on your Instagram feeds, we're able to tap into that for events that we are bringing here. First, I think just to drive that local awareness of what's going on for those local Edmontonians who might be looking for, you know, something to do in, in August and kind of planning their weekends or whatever that looks like. But secondarily, the big, the big focus for us is to drive in those visitors from, you know, around Canada, around the province and around the world. So those are all pieces that, you know, Explore and the city both work really closely with the organizers and with the host committee to really help drive those points home. As I mentioned as well, that player and visitor experience is something that, you know, we take very seriously. I think, you know, as, as Leanne mentioned with, you know, with Lydia as an example, I think, you know, she won here, there's definitely that tie. But I think what we've seen in a lot of cases is really those, you know, small things and how athletes and visitors are able to experience the city that really kind of make it stick in their head and come back. So I think on the Explore Edmonton side of things, we, we really, you know, understand how vital that is and really place an emphasis on that, you know, going above and beyond again and doing those little things that really make it memorable for everybody who is coming to town. And then going into more, you know, what you see, this picture here, this is an example of one activation that we executed for the Canadian Finals in Ontario last year. We also ran a full cattle drag through the heart of downtown. So I don't know if anybody was down there and thought, oh, it's going to be a couple dozen cows running through Jasper. So yeah, really with that piece, it's just again, you know, those small pieces to get people really excited about the event. You know, it, it takes shape in many, many different forms. And I think we want to work with, with Golf Canada and with Royal Mayfair to really, you know, execute something that is impactful and, you know, I think takes into account really the, the true kind of meaning and messaging behind what the event means to the city and kind of getting that out in a creative way. So yeah, our team is, is phenomenal just with, you know, all kinds of ideas. Yeah, we, cattle drives to big letters to, you know, you name it, we've, we've done it. We'll, we'll try anything once. So get the, get the wheels turning a little bit on there, but get people excited and down to the course. And I, I think the last point, just as Ron mentioned, and as we've talked about, you know, She Plays Golf, First Tee program, things like that. I think we, we really place an emphasis on making sure that, you know, this isn't just a, you know, it's great, the event comes in for a week and then, you know, we'll see it again in however many years, hopefully sooner than one year. You know, I think we really want to make sure that there is that continuity that comes out of the event, whether it's, you know, a legacy program or, again, could be more general, just having an impact on the next generation of golfers in the community, anything like that. So I think that's something, yeah, between the city of Edmonton, Explore Edmonton, working with various community partners within the city, something that's always at front of mind and, you know, something that we really try to emphasize when we're attracting an event in the first place. And then, you know, kind of going through the whole process, making sure that it does leave that lasting legacy. So yeah, all that to say, this is just kind of a, you know, very quick coles notes as to what, what we do support with. But just to echo what Ron said, I think, you know, it goes without saying that we're here every step of the way. I think we're incredibly excited, it's understatement of the year, to have this event back in our city. And again, yeah, I can't thank the Mayfair and everybody involved enough, so that's us.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you both. So this will get into a bit more of the timeline of what the club will actually go through in terms of the build and the transformation that will happen. So we generally kind of, I'll say our overall timeline here is about eight weeks, two months or so. Right now, we're slated for our event in Edmonton to be August seventeenth to twenty-third in 2026. And so about six weeks or so out from the event, or maybe about a month, sorry, about four weeks or so out from the event, we start our build. And so that means we start bringing all the supplies we need to build the tents, to build those, those hospitality spaces onto site and start getting ready to actually start building those. Member play continues as it would with some construction happening in and around your play. Golf course, there's kind of minimal changes throughout the, the start of the build and you may see some tee decks start to close as we get closer to the event just to make sure that those decks that the LPGA players will be using are in as great of shape as possible. And then portions of the parking lot will have, be used for kind of staging those supplies that we need. And so those supplies will kind of come in in larger quantities as we get closer to the event. One of the best things about having CPKC and a rail line as our partner is they help transport all this stuff that we need for us. So you'll see a lot of those shipping containers come in and get unloaded and then head out. And so that partnership is really important for us as we move this event around the, the country. And then we start our tournament week, which for members is like a ten-day closure of the, the facilities. So that would start, as I was talking about in the Week at a Glance, the, the kind of, once play is done on the Friday night, as of Saturday, the course is closed for members, the clubhouse is also closed. And that just allows us kind of the weekend to get things ready, move the rest of our stuff in, make sure everything's set up and ready to go for when the players and guests start to arrive. The club does maintain kind of their normal administrative spaces, so we don't completely kick everyone out of here because the club staff will obviously be very busy helping us out and making sure everything goes smoothly. We generally have members clear out their lockers and take everything they need with them. There might be some reciprocal setup with, through the pro shop and those kinds of things. So just want to make sure everyone has what they need and understand that members would not have access into this clubhouse unless they're provided the appropriate accreditation into the building. And then we kind of play, finish the tournament and then we start with the teardown. Generally, we're about two weeks to get everything off the course. That first week, we do as much as we can to get off the course and then it's more just about packing, organizing, rearranging with the largest structures taking the longest to get kind of taken down. You would be back to full access or however the club determines as of Tuesday. And there will be some wear and tear on the golf course, obviously, where those structures have been sitting. But most of it should be outside of the ropes and hopefully not impact your regular play. Excuse me. I think that covers that. And then, and some people are curious kind of what happens inside the clubhouse. So CPK uses this space as their hosting space, so they host lots of different guests and clients on-site. The players and caddies eat with the CPKC guests, so player dining is within this space as well. We're anticipating that we'll use the men's locker room for the players. The players will also likely utilize some of the fitness facilities down there. And we're working through our full plans of what everything else will, will kind of look like within the clubhouse. We do have a draft site plan to kind of demonstrate to you here. The biggest thing here, you may notice, is that the nines are flipped. So to accommodate our build on eighteen with the size of hosting space that CPKC looks for out on the eighteenth green as well as the corporate hospitality that Monica sells, we have flipped the, the nines. So ten is now one and, and that kind of thing. So it's not uncommon for us to do some rerouting of courses just to allow for the operations that we need. Actually, at Earl Grey, not a single hole that was played as it normally is routed. So that was a little confusing for our members, so hopefully this is just a little bit easier with the swap there. We're really excited about having Horlack Park so close. We will use kind of that park area as our main admissions, as was done in the last time we were here. And we're really excited about all the construction that's going on because I think the park will become probably an integral part of our operation and using that as a bus loop and drop-off and getting people in and utilizing some parking and maybe utilizing the park for some activities as part of the event as well. So yeah, that's kind of a high-level overview. Lots of things will continue to happen and get planned out as we continue to do some site visits, bring more of our team on-site to talk through everything that's going on. We obviously have lots of learnings from past events and Mississauga. And Mississauga is our host this year and we'll have some learnings from that event as well. So I think with that, I get to turn it over to Monica to speak a bit.
The question for the city is, Harlack gonna be done? Is that a whole thing or is that sort of like?
No, it's, it's actually supposed to open to the public again in the spring. But it'll actually be open for that. And Heritage is right before this, so it'd have to be possible. They tell me this is in the spring, it's on time. So the plan is that it will probably be completed early in the new year, but will reopen to the public in the spring, so. Marilyn warned me, somebody was gonna ask. I don't work in that area, so I checked.
So as mentioned earlier, my name is Monica, I'm responsible for the corporate hospitality sales and ticket sales for the CPKC Women's Open. The importance of me and corporate hospitality 13 months before this tournament is to come to the golf course, look for the locations to set up these amazing hosting experiences where you as members and the rest of the community will be able to purchase and host clients at the event. So at this stage, we are in the flip zone. So the rink, which we started at CPKC three years ago, will be at the top on the 17th. And that will have two different hosting locations. When I'm talking about hosting spaces, I have three different hosting spaces currently. Four seats a day, 12 seats a day, 13, sorry, four, 13 seats a day and 18 seats a day. And they are from Thursday to Sunday. So it's a four day package that I will be having available to, to host clients. So the rink will have two of those, the 18th hole will have what's known as the skyboxes, 15th hole will have club seats. At this point, talking with Marilyn, Dawn and Matt this afternoon, they already have a list, excuse me, of members and companies interested and buying. So this is a great revenue generating opportunity for the club to show the community that you're invested and that you are looking to host clients at this event. Also, as Leanne was mentioning, we have the Pro-Am. The Pro-Am is tickets and the packages from Tuesday to Sunday that you have something lined up. As mentioned, it's a foursome, a team of foursome playing, you have two LPGA's, the front nine and the back nine. So this is a fantastic package that gives you tickets to the draw party on the Tuesday, playing your course in tournament condition on the Wednesday. And then you get additional tickets Thursday to Sunday to our elevated general admission area called the Heritage Lounge. So that is all included in one package. So it's not just one day of playing, you are included and your tickets are part of almost like a five, six day promotion. So at this point, Matt and I and Dawn and Marilyn are setting a date. U.S. members get front of line access to corporate hospitality. The brochure will be completed early September. The U.S. members will receive an electronic version to see what is coming onto the course. At that point, you'll get a week to look at it. And Matt and Dawn, like I said, already have their lists ready to go. We are setting a date for a sales night for the members only. Members will get that night, first come, first served, to purchase this corporate hospitality space that they're looking at. After that, you get a small window of about a week to two weeks to have other members that couldn't be there on the sales night to purchase. And then you as members and the community will be able to go to your outreach before we launch publicly. It takes about a month and then we go public and then it's, it's wide open, it'll be on our website and it'll be a busy time. With the conversation that we had today, I anticipate selling out even in the first month. The importance of doing this early on, a year ahead of the tournament is an important question. A lot of corporations, many of you, if you're in corporate world, look at their budget for '26 in the fall of '25. So if you, if someone says, oh, this is too far in advance, I, I don't want to think about it. This is the time. So we literally have almost like a two month window from September until maybe mid, mid-November to do a really good job, because then come November, snowbirds go south, holiday season kicks in. No one's really thinking golf at this point, they're probably thinking hockey. Then we regroup in April and, and whatever's remaining, we continue selling. So this is why it's important to go to market now in the fall. And we will have these brochures ready for you on your computer, we'll get some hard copies for you and we'll be back in person in September to continue with the corporate hospitality. Do we have any questions?
You have some other circles?
Correct.
On hole three, one over in Harlack Park.
These are all still early stages. We have what's called the Heritage Lounge. So that's your general admission. It's going to be a covered tented space. So that is still in the plans and this is just tentative. So we've already had our director of ops, Brian Newton here, and this is his initial plans of what's going on. But at this point, skyboxes, most premium will be on the 18th. The rink will have what's known as the penalty box, that will be lining up here. And then we have our lodges that will be here. And then on the 15th, we will have our club seats. So that's the, the initial one, two, three, four, we didn't circle. These are also other areas of opportunity as, as we need and for Heritage Lounge for, for the build to happen. But these are just main areas that Brian was looking at when he was here of where these structures could go up.
On the Harlack Park piece, that's.
Oh, general admission.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So general admission, that's going to be where everyone's going to be entering the property. People aren't going to be allowed to park there, but we're going to have a continuous shuttle bus loop that kind of comes through the park. We're also toying with the idea of, of working with City of Edmonton and Explore Edmonton on creating a little bit of a fan village. You know, so maybe outside the gates, it's, it could be a really cool, unique way to invite the community in, get a taste of the event. We could be doing draws, you know, to get juniors into this, onto the, onto the grounds to experience the championship. We might be doing like radio hits, just to like try, try to create excitement and then tie us further into the local community. So that's kind of how we're gonna hopefully use Harlack Park.
The other circles also could indicate where Brian is already thinking, where CPKC, they have their hosting. They also set up, CP has part, different seating areas for the general admission to have views as well. So it's not just corporate hospitality, a sitting on the side and food and beverage is inclusive in all the corporate hospitality. So if I could mention that, so, so that's what some of these others are probably already allocated to.
Did anyone tune in and watch the RBC Canadian Open this year? Is everyone familiar with the rink? By show of hands? Yeah, yeah? Amazing. Yeah. Anyone not familiar with the rink? Okay. So the rink is basically our Canadiana theme hole, you know? So you'll see the tee markers will have hockey masks, we'll usually bring in a, a local Zamboni or ice resurfacer, as we're legally obligated to call it. And so she, you know, Leanne, Monica mentioned the, the penalty box experience too. And it, it can be a pretty rowdy space, you know, so we want it to be rowdy, yeah.
It's one of these hospitality spaces that, not typical of a golf environment. I'll be fully transparent, the Women's Open, we're way too polite. The men's get quite loud and rowdy, they get overserved. The women's, we want you to have a little more fun than being a little proper. We encourage banging on the boards. The golfers will actually come and they'll put on a jersey, like Brooke will wear on. Nelly in Chicago, she was at the Blackhawks when she was in Ottawa. I'm like, oh, now I know why.
Maybe we'll have the Stanley Cup on the tee boards.
This Saga, there's still, there might be a couple of CWHL. So it's just a way of merging the two of the nation's top sports in one, but it's a really fun area. It's eight tickets in your actual penalty box of eight by eight and it's a fun, it's a fun environment. It's a fun umbrella and just, yeah, it's a good, it's a good space, it's a good fun space. And that will keep coming down where we are. So if we start at the rink, so we start with a certain amount of penalty boxes. We sell out, then I go back to Brian, Brian, I need two more. We sell out, Brian, we need two more. So I think there was a challenge to see how far down the fairway we can get these penalty boxes built. So, so that's one space that I'm hoping that we will just have a lot of fun and just get that momentum going up that.
I'm glad you mentioned Auston Matthews bringing the Stanley Cup to the event, so thank you for that. He'll be there.
This is next year.
Keep going, keep going. Yeah, yeah. No, but you know, like it, it is like a really cool experience, you know, to Monica's point. And yeah, it's not uncommon that some of the Canadian players get serenaded by O'Canada. You know, Monica mentioned the over served nature. I've heard Edmonton likes to have a couple beverages too. But it is an incredible experience. It's like probably the best hosting experience that you'll have, you know, to bring guests and to entertain. It's a, it's a really, really fun place. I find like Thursday is kind of quiet. And then Friday, once quitting time happens, people leave the office, they get to the golf course and the drinks start flowing. It really starts to ramp up and then the weekend is incredible. You know, obviously we had in 2023, we had Nick Taylor sink his 72 foot winning putt. But you know, that day, as he was coming up to the tee on the 14th hole at Oakdale, he was just, everyone was belting O'Canada. It's hard not to get emotional, you know, kind of thinking of that. And Brooke is like one of the most proud Canadians on the planet, you know? So she really embraces that opportunity. She will be met with booze when she puts on that Ottawa Senators jersey. I will be front of the line booing. But it is a really, really cool experience. I just wanted to make sure everyone understands what, what that feels like.
The final thing with corporate hospitality, I keep saying corporate hospitality, but it's hosting space. So you don't have to be accompanied per se to go into one of these spaces. There could be four of you that want to just bring family. There was Sean, see a gentleman, it was his wife's birthday and he had a 50 person space. And he had, he got the approval, but he had Kate brought in, he had family and friends and they were on the 18th fairway. And they were like, what a great, great doing this. So it doesn't have to be corporate all the time. There could be a fun group of you that want to get together and have a hosting space. There's other ideas, Women in Tech, Women in Construction Day, Women in Law. So there's so many different ways of using this hosting space. All of these spaces have a welcome board. So if you are in one of these, a company name or your name is posted. So anyone walking by the 18th hole, they will see who's there. So that's very important for some companies that want that brand exposure. As well as mostly, all of these have a sign to, again, say the company name. So that as you're going into Marilyn's box, you know, you're going into Marilyn's penalty box, Dawn has his penalty box, Leanne has hers. So there are signs and there are branding opportunities, unique branding opportunities in all of these areas that, that will become available. So I know there's a lot of marketing people that, oh, how can we brand? What can we do? So there are, there are opportunities within corporate hospitality. On a bigger scale, there's our partnerships team at Golf Canada, that's a different conversation. That is it for corporate hospitality and the championship Pro-Am.
Okay. Bring it home.
Bring it home.
Okay. So I feel like we've given you lots of information about the events. So just wanted to kind of wrap things up with just how you can get involved and some of the next steps in our journey here towards hosting in August of 2026. So I think we've talked a little bit about some of these things. Obviously you can, to get involved, you can purchase corporate hospitality products or tickets. Volunteer, I know Dawn and Marilyn have been out recruiting committee chairs and will need about 1,200 volunteers to fill up all those committees. And so there is really something for everyone in our volunteer program. If they're not golfers, we can find a job for them. There's indoor roles, there's outdoor roles, there's walking on the course roles, there's sitting roles. So we really have something for everyone. We have things for junior golfers as well. And so really we'll, we'll be sharing a lot more information about volunteering in the coming months. A unique opportunity is you can bill it a player or caddy. You can have someone come and stay in your home. The GM at Earl Grey had Lydia co-stay with her. So it's, it is a very unique opportunity, a chance to kind of build a relationship with a player and, and maybe a long-term relationship potentially. And I think what, kind of what I started with and what I want to reiterate is tell your friends, tell your family, be an ambassador for this event, because that is the biggest thing that people can do is just let people know that we're coming to town. We want to have all of Edmonton know that we're here. We want people to be excited. We want, we just want everyone to know that the LPGA is coming here. We want everyone to know that Edmonton is a great golf community. So that's something that anyone I feel can do. If you can't be onsite, if you can't buy tickets, everyone can say, hey, did you know the CPKC Women's Open is coming to Royal Mayfair? Love for you to come and join us or be a part of it, volunteer, all those things. So I think that's something that anyone can do no matter what. So just some next steps. Next week, we're kind of going to formalize everything and do a public announcement with a press release that we are coming to Edmonton. We're going to take a little pause on Edmonton and we're going to focus on the 2025 CPKC Women's Open, August 20th to 24th at the Mississauga Golf and Country Club. So please turn, tune in. It'll be on Golf Channel, TSN and CBS on Sunday. So hopefully you can tune in and get a sense of, of what the build will look like and what the players that are coming play like. We will have someone from the LPGA, likely our advanced official, his name is Mitch Moon, come out to the golf course in September to kind of check things out. He hasn't been here before, so he'll come and visit probably around the same time as that sales night that Monica talked about. We'll do a bit of a larger team that'll join us from our professional championships team and have the LPGA on site. We are looking to do kind of our volunteer committee chair orientation in October. I know that some of you are in this room are committee chairs, so I'm looking forward to working with you. So we'll get you kind of orientated to your role in October. And then following that, we will start doing a volunteer recruitment launch. And so similar to corporate hospitality, members will get kind of first access to register for volunteers and choose their priority committee that they want to be a part of. And then we will launch to the public after that. So dates to come, but members will get that first priority of, of choice to register and, and choose the committee they want to work on.
Maybe I'll just finish and just say, thank you very, very much. It truly means a lot when clubs raise their hands and say, hey, we want to host. Being the guy that helps kind of shape the calendar, some of those calls are very, very difficult. I just really want to thank Matt, Dave and Wade, just the board, Dawn, Marilyn, just for answering the call and really embracing this opportunity. It's really our primary motivation to be here is just the enthusiasm, the support that we've already built. Like even before we even are announcing the event, we feel like this is going to be a smashing success. So just want to thank everyone in the room. It means a lot. Thank you for having us today and let's, let's hit a homerun, okay?
We can field any questions now or if you want to come up and speak with us, we'll stick around for a bit and we can answer questions. Yes.
Excuse me, I have one question maybe for Matt more than anybody. After everybody leaves on Monday, can we set up the course the same way as Monday or Tuesday?
That's funny.
If you're making the announcement next week about the, about the event, will it be an opportunity on the Golf Canada website for other people in the city to start volunteering?
We won't watch the volunteer registration for a little while. Just because the timelines, it's usually a little bit better the, the longer we can wait to get closer to the event. Cause people's plans change, they, they'll get really excited in July now and then next July, they'll be like, oh, I can't do it anymore. But I, I do think that we'll have good volunteer uptake, so.
Yeah. And I think on that too, you know, well, once we have the actual release ready, you know, really going to encourage, you know, Matt and Dawn and Marilyn just to send that out to the full membership. And maybe there's a call to action inside that to say, reach out to Dawn and Marilyn if you want to get involved from a volunteer perspective. So they're already kind of capturing a lot of those people. So I think that that could be probably a good way to, to at least kind of hopefully build.
I wasn't thinking so much about our club as some of the.
Broader.
Five of clubs and other golfers here in the city that might want to get involved. So we've, we've reached out to the Golf Association and they're, they've obviously got a number of local member clubs. And they're spreading the word. And they're spreading the word to their member clubs with a view to having some of their members, clubs sponsor a hole and take care of the marshing for that hole and getting their members involved and interested in participating in other ways.
And just to kind of emphasize the big broad goal with volunteers, we're looking at thirteen hundred. Like thirteen hundred would be the sweet spot for volunteers for for the CPKC Women's Open. On the men's side, we see about twenty three hundred, which is excellent, you know. So thirteen hundred would be amazing. I got a feeling we're going to smash it though. Yeah, yeah. So thanks for that, that's a great question.
For the people who have specific questions about the different committees, Leanne's the person to to go talk to after this right now. We're, we're learning, we've got that part of the handbook that which needs to be tweaked after this next tournament. But she's the person who knows all the details that we've been stuttering on.
She's the boss, yeah, for sure, yeah. Yeah, I just want to mention too, like we are going to stick around, we're just going to have a beverage. And so if you, if you want to ask any questions offline, you're more than welcome to. I'd love to meet you and say hello, so.
Great.
Great.
Thanks.
Awesome, thanks again.